I'm going to call to order the city council regular meeting. It is 6:00 PM, Tuesday, June 7th, 2022. We're at Granberry City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street, Granberry, Texas, 76048. I'd like to remind everyone that we do have a live showing of this meeting on granberry.org/live. And I'd also like to let everyone know again, just to remind you, that you can go online, pull up the council agenda, and every one of these items that are blue, hit on the blue line and you will open a hyperlink. And you see absolutely every piece of paper that the staff up here and the city council get to look at prior to the meeting. So with that, we are called to order. And I would like to invite Ms. Diane Raspberry, Associate Pastor of Hope Community Church, to give the invocation. Please stand.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we solemnly come before you. Lord, we ask that you just bless this time that we have together. We ask that you bless all city council members and everyone that's here. Father, we ask that you pour out your Holy Spirit. We ask that you pour out your discernment and your wisdom over this body. Father, we ask that everything done tonight, Lord, be a blessing to you. Be according to your will and glorify you. Father, we ask that you continue to draw our community together, Father, and draws closer to you. Lord, we just want to thank you for the privilege that we have to live in this country and in this community. And Father, we ask that you bless it. Please keep all safe, Lord. And Father, we just want to tell you that we love you and that we give all honor and praise and glory to you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask Mr. Paul Hyde to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag and the Texas Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Be seated. We have number four, proclamation and presentation. And we do have someone that has already signed up as wanting to have a public comment on that. Mr. Hayes, would you like to come up and speak to that?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Good evening, Council and Mr. City Manager. My name is Richard Hayes. I live at 428 Riverbank Lane. I'd like to speak this morning, or this evening, about one of our great city employees, Cherie Lowe. Cherie was responsible for the recent shredding event that the city sponsored, which was a true win-win-win event. More than 70 city residents brought their confidential papers to be shredded, and more than 4,000 pounds of these papers were shredded at no cost to the citizens. As an additional win, more than $2,200 was donated to the Granberry Volunteer Fire Department. And while Cherie did a great job organizing it and running it, my praise for her goes beyond that because I observed that she is a great manager and a wonderful leader. Throughout the event, she was there inspiring people throughout the day. She made sure everybody had access to cold water so no one was overheated, maintaining the health of the people who were there. And she made sure there were copious quantities of donuts and pizza to keep morale high. And as importantly, she made notes of ways to make future events better. It's great employees like Cherie that make Granberry a truly wonderful place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. Counsel, any comments, encouraging statements for staff today? It's always hard. Okay. Mr. Hayes, I'd like to add to one of the things that you had there. I think that there was some great assistance from other parts of the staff and also from volunteer staff. I think Connie downstairs that's at the desk, every, she's down here, down here, she's three days a week. I come in now and I think it's already Wednesday because she shows up on Tuesdays. But there's, you're right, there is a wonderful staff here. Mr. Kaufman?
Well, you know, I've got some great news, but I'm going to save it for a future meeting and we'll cover it then. But we do have a great team and it's pretty awesome to get to work with these folks and see the success that they have that makes us all look good. So we do have some good news coming on the horizon. I'm holding out till Jeff does it on the social media.
Great, I think. Okay. You guys just go sit there, okay? Okay. Number five, public comments on agenda items for non-public hearing agenda items. Speakers have a time limit of three minutes allotted at this time for comments regarding agenda items that are not listed as a public hearing. Public hearing comments will be recognized when the public hearing is opened. I don't have anything, Carla, is there? No one has signed up to speak. Okay. We'll go to the consent agenda. And all items on the consent agenda are routine or previously discussed. Items will be approved with one motion. However, should a member of the city council wish to discuss any item, said item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the deliberation agenda. We have just the city council meeting, regular meeting minutes and the special meeting minutes. Does anyone have any question? Want to remove them? No? Do I hear a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Corgan?
Second.
Mr. Vale? I have motion and second. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. There are no nays. Pass to six and zero. So for the deliberation agenda, number 7.0. Receive the 2022 Charter Review Commission report and take any appropriate action, including acceptance, amendment, or rejection of any charter amendment suggestions in said report. And we have the Charter Review Commission final report here. We're going to open this to discussion and I think, Mr. Kaufman?
Yeah, at this time, I'd like to call on John Grace to, as the chairman of that committee, to present a formal report to the council. I might add that they did a great job. Can't thank you guys enough for your time that you spent putting this together and plowing through that document and reviewing it and giving it lots of thought. Thank you for that.
Thank you. I am John Grace. I live at 2321 River Road here in Granberry, Texas. And I am here on behalf of the commission, the Charter Review Commission. And we have conducted, as we were appointed by the council, and it was a pleasure to have the opportunity to serve our community. But I'd like to thank specifically the members of the commission, Gary Pittner, Jan Caldwell, Richard Heffs, Laura Lief, Gary Miller, and Skip Overdyer. They were excellent and great, never missed a meeting. And it was really, really nice to know that they all dedicated themselves to come for that. I'd like to also thank specifically the city staff members that were supportive of our commitment. And it was Mickey Matlock who really assured us administratively that we'd be on track and that everything we did was recorded and reported. And then, of course, the contribution of Jeremy Sorrels as our legal advisor, who attended all the meetings and was very helpful in understanding the state law and the relationship to that in our charter. And then, of course, the city manager, who was a regular attendee. Stephen Vale's also attended some of our meetings. Thank you all for coming. Our recommendation to the council from the commission is that there are no substantive changes needed in this review. Now, as you have, by looking at your letter, there seems like there's a lot of recommendations, but let me assure you, those are only clerical in nature and then no substantive change to the intent or any other portion of the charter. So our recommendation is that the council take no action and that the city charter continue to live on as it has for the last two years since its major revision as a healthy leadership document for our community. Any questions?
Counsel? Mr. Grace, you and I spoke earlier, and I did have some questions, and you've certainly clarified those. But I have only one request, I believe, unless there are some questions that come up from the council here. But I'd like a redline copy, old, and the redline new. And we certainly will assist in making that happen, just so that I can compare the old charter to the new charter.
Certainly. I'm confident the city secretary's office and Mickey can provide that to you.
Yes. Okay.
I have a question about that.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Mayor, I just got some questions. I don't know if this is the time to go ahead and ask those questions about the charter for some of the other council members to consider on making some changes on certain sections. I'll bring your attention to page 15 of 39 of that review, that charter review. If you just tap on the screen of your iPad, it will tell you what, and you look at the very bottom, it'll tell you what page you're on. So 15 of 39, section 202. This was brought up to my attention about people that have run for a short term as a councilperson, just to fulfill a vacancy and then turn around and not get reelected. I think the period of two years is a pretty long period. I would make a suggestion or entertain any type of suggestion for individuals that have been elected that hasn't done a full term to be considered at a shorter period to serve for the city. For instance, if an elected official is filling a vacancy that's been vacant because a council member vacated his spot and there was an election held and that person only held the office of that council for a year and then did not get reelected, having that person come and, if they have a servant heart to be a contributor of the city, I think they would, I would say six months would be a cooling off period for that person. But for a person that's been elected and has done a full-term election for three years, then I would say the period of two years is efficient. And I would just bring that attention to the rest of the council if that is an option for those that are not elected for a full term.
What section were you in?
Section 202, which is prohibiting, holding, or running for other office. Would that require that we take this, would that be an administrative change? Or would that require that we take this to a?
Historically, in the 2018 charter review, these changes were made from one year to two years, and the voters approved it to go to two years. And what that does, it prevents an employee or a council member from becoming an employee for two years. That's what the intent is. But it says any officer position in the service of the city.
Well, if that's the intent, Chris, I think that needs to be, I think that needs to be cleared up. If it meant, if it's meant to say that a councilperson can't be an employee of the city until after two years.
It goes beyond that. It says appointed to any officer or position of service. So that would be, say like you don't run for council and you want to serve on the P&amp;Z, you would have to wait two years, is what it says.
And that's where my, where I'm having a hard time because if people are serving and they want to serve on other boards, let's just say they don't want to be a council or a councilman is not what they want to do and they found it more fulfilling that they were on the Planning and Zoning Commission. I think, I don't think the intent that you had here and what you're saying is the same. And I think that needs to be readdressed.
I'm reading what you're reading. I agree with you. That's what it says.
Right.
Does that include that they can't run for office again for two years?
No.
No.
It says be appointed.
Except the title says prohibiting, holding, or running for other office from the title of the section.
Too bad Jeremy's not here.
Well, no. We could, yeah. Would you have him both speed dial?
I do have to have him speed dial, absolutely.
Right.
The other section is, just write down, is 2.0515, I think, let me get to it. I just had to go back to my notes. 205E, section 205E.
Yeah, that's state law.
205E. And this goes back to, if you vacate your office, if you can still can be considered mayor pro temp if you vacate your office. Here's my argument on that. If you resign as a councilperson, you have to wait until somebody's successfully qualified to fulfill your position. You're still a councilman and you're an elected councilman. I have no, I don't have an issue with that. The issue is, I think, at the next meeting, the council should elect another mayor pro temp for that position. If he vacates his office.
Mayor?
Yes, Pro Tem.
I would just ask why? What's the argument behind doing that? Because that really is kind of a short-term fix. The next election is going to bring a new mayor pro temp, so I'm trying to figure out what the logic is behind putting a new mayor pro temp in for a short term when somebody's already been serving and kind of knows the ropes. I'm just curious as to your argument as to why.
Right. Thank you for that, Trish. I just think if he's already vacating his office, then we need to just go ahead and elect another mayor pro temp for that office.
Okay, I'm asking you the same question. I don't understand why.
Because he resigns. If he resigns as a councilman, he should resign, period, as everything from resignation. That's any corporation. If a president?
But you're still serving on the council during that time.
He can serve as a councilman, but he, this is, mayor pro temp is not an elected position.
No, it's appointed.
It's appointed by the council. So at that time, if he is resigning as a councilperson, he's resigning as a mayor pro temp, he's saying he doesn't want to be a councilman until he's replaced, so to speak, or she's replaced in that instance, then I think at that time, then the council needs to appoint somebody else to be mayor pro temp. And I know you're going to, it's going to keep on.
It is. I just don't understand the logic. If you're still serving as a councilmember, my argument would be you still continue to serve in the capacity that you're serving until the next councilmember serves. And then at that time, like we've been doing it previously. I'm just not sure on the logic behind making a short-term switch like that.
We don't know if it's going to be short-term or long-term. He could resign after he gets elected as mayor pro temp. It could be nine months, 12 months, it could be two months. We don't know how short of a term that would be. I know we get elected every year as a mayor pro temp. But if he resigns as a councilperson, then he's more or less resigning as a mayor pro temp. I don't think he should, or he, he or she should hold that position once they resign.
Mr. Wildley?
But the resignation doesn't take effect until the next election. And so theoretically, if you put in a new mayor pro temp, they would probably only be mayor pro temp or possibly until that upset election. And so I tend to agree if, you know, again, you're not resigning effective immediately, you're resigning pending the next election. And I don't see why that person couldn't fulfill all their duties.
Could I just review something, Mayor?
Please do.
So this came up during the charter review and Jeremy put some redline comments in there as to what was discussed and how it was handled. And I'll just read it. "Commission referenced a council meeting where a council member questioned mayor pro temp continuing to serve. Jeremy states that everyone on the council is a councilperson. Does not matter if you are titled as mayor or a council member or mayor pro temp. Mayor pro temp is a title held for one year until annual election. There was no recommendations made by the commission." So the secret here is if the mayor decides to resign, he's still going to preside as mayor. And if a council member, he's also a councilperson. If a council member resigns, he's going to continue to serve as a council member. And then Jeremy said it also goes to mayor pro temp because, you know, here's the thing. If you put that in the charter, what happens if everybody elects the same person to be the mayor pro temp after they go through that exercise? See what I'm saying?
Yeah, the difference, the difference, Chris, is that you're elected as a mayor. You're elected as a councilmember. You're not elected as a mayor pro temp. You're appointed, not elected. That's the difference between mayor, councilmember, and mayor pro temp. Mayor pro temp, you're not elected. You're appointed by the council to be that person.
So it may be that that would be a rule of procedure is what I'm getting at because, well, the charter does state that.
The commissioner's position is that that would be a procedural activity and not necessarily a charter item.
And it could be that the charter provides that they're elected every first meeting and after the election, and it doesn't provide anything other than that. So I don't know. Have you got something y'all want to chase? I don't mean whatever. We're here to serve.
Let me, if I could, if, and I don't have the verbiage right here. I could go in the office and get it. But I'm going to choose just to ask that each of you pull up Robert's Rules and read about mayor pro temp. And I think you all understand, I mean, an absolutely important position that we have. But the pro temp actually only, that title only fits, now that's not, I mean, customary right now in this day and time is that there is a title and they carry the title at all times. But if you go and read Robert's Rules, mayor pro temp is actually only the pro temp when they're sitting in the mayor's seat and operating from this chair. Like I said, I can go get the book, but I'm going to encourage you to go find that in the Robert's Rules and just read it. And the rationale that Chris just gave here and that Mr. Grace gave is along the lines of where I would be. It's, you could reelect the mayor pro temp and like, what have you got there? But at the same time, it's not a title that generally is carried past when you're in the chair here, per Robert's Rules. Which, we have procedural rules. I was hoping that we would have a Robert's Rules, but I guess that comes in our process and procedures as well. You, I was very impressed in the meetings that I was in that there was deliberation. I mean, this group did deliberate through this.
We did. We studied every section and every T and every I and every comma and every period.
Mr. Rodriguez, any more further questions? I get them.
No, just going back to section 202. I just want to see if the council, I mean, if this is pertaining to councilmembers applying for a position with the city, then that needs to be readdressed in this, in this section. Because as it states, it's, what it reads is any city councilman can't serve on any position with the city, even including volunteer boards or any boards that the city has for two years. And I don't think that was the intention of this section. So that just needs to be cleared up on this one, if that's the case.
And again, in the red comments from our attorney, they discussed this. And then Jeremy explained several different scenarios on why this cooling off period is needed and no recommendations were made by the commission. But there's nothing that prohibits y'all from redirecting the commission to look at it again or to do whatever you think's necessary to move forward.
I do recognize Mr. Wildley's very clear notation here. This prohibited holding or running for other office, which is, I'm listening, that was not the intent. I mean.
I don't know, to be honest, what the intent is.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Vale?
Mr. Grace, I mean, a lot of meetings, appreciate all the hard work on this. Do you remember any of the scenarios that he mentions in these comments? He mentioned different, several different scenarios as to why a cooling off period is needed?
You know, this was my third opportunity to be on this commission and the second time as chairman. So one of the things that I've learned, and after studying this charter and reviewing it with the commission over, you know, the six or seven years over that period of time, is that this is kind of a historical document and it was created based on experience by the council and the Charter Review Commission for years and years ago. And so over time, a lot of those things that were created because of concerns about previous actions within the city, within the council, within the city government, a lot of those things were placed into the charter to prevent them or preclude them from happening again because obviously there were some hard feelings out there about some of this. This is one of the examples. I believe that exists because there was at a time, many years ago, a situation where there was disagreement, lack of election, immediate desire to return to the city in another enforceable position. And it was thought that perhaps to avoid those situations occurring in the future, that this was created. So I don't know if that helped clarifies it for you, but you just have to understand that the charter, which has changed dramatically over the last six years, was intended to preclude things from occurring again based on the experience of the people drafting the charter.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Vale?
Thank you, John. I think the other thing I just thought of is, you know, there are a lot of opportunities to serve in our community that don't have to be a board or a commission or a city council. I mean, we have lots of organizations in the city, one that my wife and I both volunteer at. So I think, you know, if you've got a servant's heart, which we all do, there are a lot of opportunities in our city and a number of organizations to serve. And I think, you know, I take heed to the comments that you made. And, you know, this is a document that's based on a lot of experience over time and those things are in there for a reason and I concur with the logic. Thank you.
Mr. Kaufman?
One closing thought. Based on history, I think that's a good example. And, you know, I think in my seven years here, there has been extreme shifts in the people that sit at this dais. Different personalities come and go. And I think that the intent, after reading this and thinking about what you're saying and listening with him, I can see how this provision has benefited the city. Because at times, this council, when I, for instance, when I was hired, was kind of split one way or the other. And as elections changed, some of those positions were changed and the political lack of unity continued to exist, even though it was maybe sharper than what was previous. And the last thing you would want is to have somebody that was defeated in an election be appointed to a position, making recommendations to a body that is split and going to be split even more because of that defeat. And so for the goal of unifying this body, I can see the buffer that could benefit the organization. So you don't want to, you don't want to just keep. So you don't want to, you don't want to just keep, you know, just because your best friend loses, you don't want to appoint him to the planning and zoning commission just to keep him involved, you know? And, and that's what we do as, as humans. We want our people around, we want our friends around, we want people around. But for the good of the body, it's a clean break. It's a clean break at the end of that election. And it gives time for people to, to re, rehash and refresh and reboot possibly and build unity. Because if this body is not working together, it's not going to function at optimal level. And so, it's just kind of, it's hard enough to, to go through an election as, as dirty as the election cycles are these days and it's polarizes. National election, all the way to local elections, everybody's polarizing. And you end up with a polarization and you need to bring unity. And so maybe that's one of the purposes of, of the way it's written. I really didn't read it that way until tonight. So I'm glad you brought it up and let us think about it.
Well, you know, I, 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 I hear what you're saying, I agree with what you're saying. Council member must wait for a period of two years before he or she can be appointed to any office or position in the service of the city. Jeremy explained different scenarios of this cooling off period is needing. I, I don't disagree with that. But the heading says prohibited from holding or running for other office. If that person ran and was elected, uh, that's different from my buddy appointing, you know, someone else.
But, yeah, it's being appointed that makes the difference. You can't be appointed, yeah.
Yeah. So the heading, or, or running for other office. I, I don't know that I see, I mean, I think they have the right to run.
I think if they run for state rep, I think that's where you're headed. If they run for state rep and lose, they had to vacate this seat. They can't come back and try to run again next election. That's what I think it's saying. Or you run for county judge, or you run for a, a different governmental agency elected position. Because the charter address is running for council in the way it already, it's already addressed somewhere else. So I think that what you're talking about there is if you're gonna, if you're gonna go run for another office, you have to vacate your seat for a charter.
Right.
And what, what you're agreeing to do is win or lose, you're not coming back for two years. You're not going to put your hat in the ring. Because again, you got a superstar, he says, I'm going to go over here and do this. If he doesn't win, he comes back, runs for the seat that was, for the unexpired term that comes up, as soon as it comes up, six months later. And you just got topsy-turvy on this body here.
Okay, well, wait a minute. Is that?
That's my thought. I don't know.
That's okay. This is, uh, uh, so, we had a special election a year ago, okay? We had an individual resign to run for, uh, a different office. The individual, uh, did not, uh, you know, he did not win that. So is he not eligible to run for two years?
I think the charter covers that in another place. Or it talks about the, uh, uh, council running for mayor or mayor running for council. It covers that in another place. I don't know. That's a good question for our attorney.
Well, you know, as we read this, this is to receive the twenty-two, twenty-two charter, say thank you very much. I mean, it does not mean that we have to take action tonight. We do have a timeline, correct?
You do.
Yes, and that timeline is no later than?
It's six months, uh, from, I think you have to do something by the middle of July.
And today's the seventh, so we have four or five weeks to do something, okay? Other conversations? We've received, Ms. Reiner?
So theoretically, we have two more meetings before that deadline hits. If I'm doing the math correctly, is that correct, Mr. Grace?
I believe so.
So, uh, perhaps we postpone and clarify since Mr. Sorrell is not here this evening and just kind of figure out what those scenarios look like and make sure. I mean, we're talking about semantics here, but that's, obviously it's important because everybody's questioning it at this point. And I agree with you. I, I think that you're right on. History proves that this is not, you know, we do things for a reason. And I'm fine with the two-year cooling off period for all of the, the reasons that we just discussed. Um, there, like Mr. Vale said, we have plenty of opportunities in this town to serve until that two years is up. And they might, that person might find something that they are more passionate about and that might leave something open for another person who might not have otherwise been willing to run or serve. Um, but I, I would say since we don't necessarily have to do anything with this tonight, maybe we bring this back and clarify that heading. So I guess I'm making a motion to postpone.
Okay, to a definite date, postpone to a definite date?
To a definite date of first meeting in July? Or can we bring it back before that? July fifth, okay.
Okay.
That would be my motion.
I second that.
We have a motion on the floor to postpone making a decision. A definite postponement until July the fifth, and it's been second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Thank you, Mr. Grace, very much.
It's been my pleasure.
And the commission as well.
I will thank the person.
I think we're going to be back to you, asking for more.
Look forward to the opportunity.
All right. Seven point two is to consider a request of Joanne Albertelli, Wesley Cleveland, and Tracy Cleveland to replat lot one, block one. Albertelli addition as lot one R, block, block one Albertelli addition. Property is located at the northeast corner of Cleveland Road and Acton Highway. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. This is a, uh, housekeeping item for this family, so I'll turn it over to Kara Wowie, our director of community development.
Thank you. So this is a replat, uh, shown here on the slide outlined in teal. The site is on the northeast corner of Cleveland Road and Acton Highway. It's approximately three acres in land area. Um, the site is in the extraterritorial jurisdiction and, um, not zoned. So they are, um, splitting this lot, taking the westernmost portion into meets and bounds and leaving the other remaining portion platted. It meets all the standards and requirements. Uh, this shows the plat application, just as some background information. Um, prior P and Z action, the planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the replat by unanimous five-zero vote on May ninth. Um, this evening, the suggested actions, there must be either an approval, approved with conditions, or a denial. Staff is recommending approval. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Wildley?
So, this plat shows it's being vacated, it's being vacated to where?
This right here to get it vacated.
Right. And it, and it becomes part of what?
The mother track. Can you go back to the slide?
Sure.
That shows the burial.
This one or the next?
There. It goes into that big track of land.
Oh, that road, okay, that, that's, that's a big, okay.
And, and what, what, what I interpret they're doing, what I interpret that they're doing is they're selling that piece of property. You can see my hand here, this part here. It was not where that line is, catches that building to be inside this plat. And they're keeping this.
Right.
And it's, it's a family deal.
Okay.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, uh, item. So I will open the public hearing if there is anyone that would like to speak to this or if you have questions for someone. Is there anyone who wants to speak to the public hearing? Then I will close the public hearing. So do I hear a motion to honor the request of Joanne Albertelli, Wesley Cleveland, Tracy Cleveland to replot lot one, block one. Albertelli addition as lot one R, block one Albertelli addition. The property is located in the northeast corner of Cleveland Road and Acton Highway?
Make a motion to approve as stated.
I'll second.
Mr. Vale, we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. There are no opposed, passes six and oh. So, item seven point three, public hearing. Consider adopting ordinance number twenty-two point, or dash twenty-three, approving a request of George Brumbach for a specific use permit for addition to a manufactured home. The property is addressed eight oh nine Holly Hills Cemetery Road, S U P twenty, twenty-two dash oh five. Eight oh nine Holly Hills location and zoning map. Mr. Kaufman?
Yes, I'll turn this over to Ms. Wowie as well.
Thank you. So this location map, this site is located as stated on Holly Hills Cemetery Road. It is approximately point five acres in area. It is in interim holding. And, um, the purpose is to provide for an addition to a existing manufactured home. The addition is the, the cause for the specific use permit. So this slide just shows the existing conditions. The, um, existing home is there slightly on the middle of the, the northern portion of the site. This shows the site plan with the proposed addition there on the upper or north side of the existing manufactured home. These are documentations from the file. It's a photograph of the, the street side of the property, so the addition would be coming towards the street. The proposal does meet all the, the standards of the zoning district. And we did publish, uh, newspaper notice and sent out eighteen public notices. We've received no input either in favor nor in opposition to this request. The planning and zoning commission on May ninth voted in favor with a unanimous five-zero vote. Uh, the suggested action, the ordinance states in recommending a specific use permit for premises under consideration, be granted, the planning and zoning commission shall determine such uses are harmonious and adapted to the building structures and uses of abutting property and other property in the vicinity of the premise under consideration. The surrounding area consists of similar types of, of homes. This is the second manufactured home S U P on this site. And the reason for the, the second one is, um, to approve that addition to the home. Staff is recommending approval. Your voting options are to approve, approve with conditions, or deny. Thank you, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I just had one. On the chart, we sent out eighteen notices and then you had parentheses, seven public notices to all property owners. And I believe I'm looking at the thing here, it says we mailed out seven public notices. Is this just a?
It's a script nurse.
Just, okay, so it should be seven.
I apologize for that.
All right, get that corrected. Other, um, comments, questions? This is a public hearing as well, so I'm going to open up the public hearing if anyone would like to speak on this subject. No questions on this? Comments from? Then I'm going to close the, uh, public hearing. And I will ask to consider adopting ordinance number twenty-two. I'd like to hear a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-three, approving a request of George Brumbach for a specific use permit for addition to a manufactured home. The property is addressed eight oh nine Holly Hills Cemetery Road. Mr. Wildley, Mr. Wildley moves, makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Rodriguez, second that. Thank you very much. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say no. It passes six and oh.
Ms. Reiner, I saw you there, just a little late. Okay.
Seven four, we will now have a presentation by Brinkley, Sergeant Wigginton Architects and Councilman Huntsaker on the city of Granbury Aquatic, Aqui, Aquatic Facility Audit and Feasibility Study. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Um, I would like to turn it over to, this is, uh, George Dynis and Stephen Springs. Uh, they know more about aquatic facilities than I, than I ever wished to know. Um, they'll go through this, uh, with you and you can ask them some questions. And I'd be glad to answer any questions about our existing, uh, pool, if you have any afterwards.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Uh, it's good to be here, uh, tonight. My name is George Dynis with Councilman Huntsaker. And we do aquatic facility, uh, planning and design. And so we're working with, uh, Stephen Springs and Dwayne Brinkley with Brinkley Sergeant Wigginton Architects, uh, looking at, uh, the existing condition as well as, uh, possible future options for the swimming pool. And so with that, we should have a presentation, uh, that we'll pull up here in just a second. There we go. Uh, and so, uh, as someone who grew up, uh, within the area, uh, I was actually, uh, coaching summer swim team in the city of Denton from nineteen ninety-seven to nineteen ninety-nine. And actually got to bring my team down here to swim at this pool. Um, probably the summer of, I think it was the summer of nineteen ninety-eight or nineteen ninety-nine, which was right after it, it opened. The construction drawings are dated, uh, late, late nineteen nineties. Uh, and I actually saw Dana Volmer, uh, swim in this pool. So it was a nice little, uh, fun note. And so what we've done, uh, with our, uh, assessment here is we have looked at the need for aquatics within the city of Granbury and the surrounding communities. We've looked at, uh, some program elements to, uh, support that need. And then we've also looked at the, uh, cost implications of that, both on the capital as well as the operational side. And so, you know, here are some pictures of the exista, existing Dana Volmer Municipal Swing Pool. Uh, you can see there in the top middle, there are some issues with, uh, you know, cracking in the, the pool surface. There's some issues with, uh, you know, the deck, you know, heaving and settling a little bit. Uh, the middle, uh, bottom picture there is the existing, uh, children's pool. Uh, and then the water slide there, uh, on the bottom right. And then also the mechanical equipment. You can see the, the pictures of the deck in the bottom left. You have the mechanical room, uh, some corrosion there in the top right as well as, uh, the existing support building, uh, there in the bottom middle picture. That's actually, uh, right down the middle of that picture, there's a, a pretty large crack within the support building that you can actually see through, uh, the building. Uh, but just because of the, the age and condition of the, the support building. And so, uh, our firm typically assigns outdoor swing pools to have a lifespan in the neighborhood of twenty-five to thirty years. And so, uh, this pool actually falls right within this window where we would see it's time for some type of renovation, uh, or, uh, an eventual replacement. Some of the things that we consider when we look at renovation versus replacement, we look at the physical side of things, which is the documenting, documenting of the conditions that I just, uh, notated. But then we also look at the functional side. And that typically will ask the question, does this pool meet the needs of, you know, the aquatic users within the community? And what we find and know from, uh, national statistics is that ninety-two percent of people qualify themselves as recreational swimmers. And the main place that people, uh, are introduced to swimming is through outdoor aquatic facilities. And so, uh, on the functional side, you know, attendance has been declining in recent years, not just because of the, the pandemic has obviously, uh, hurt that a little bit. But then, uh, just in, in general, as other facilities have newer and updated facilities. Uh, and specifically with the bathhouse components, you know, this pool was built right before, uh, Stephen's firm and our firm started, uh, teaming together in the late nineties, early two thousands and, uh, doing more modern municipal family aquatic centers, uh, like in, uh, Cleburne Splash Station is an example of that. If you would go to that facility and compare it to this facility, it, it was only built a few years later. Uh, but the bathhouse is different. It had, it had family changing rooms, uh, it had a lap pool, plus it had a recreational pool. And so those are some of the things that we, we look at. Uh, so with the existing condition, physical condition, uh, of the pool, you know, we looked at, uh, just to bring it up to, you know, a newer version of, of what it once was, you know, looking at pool deck, replacement gutter, piping, uh, new filtrations, resurface the pool, uh, put in a new water slide. Uh, we had that, you know, right about one point two million dollars, uh, in repairs. Again, that would not do anything with the existing, uh, pool layout or pool functionality. Everything, uh, would remain the same. Uh, so that's an exist, an, uh, assessment of the existing conditions of the pool. Uh, throughout this process, we also reached out to the community. Uh, so we launched a community survey, uh, early this year. We got over two hundred, uh, responses. Uh, almost half of the responders, uh, had, uh, children under the age of eighteen. Uh, the majority were residents of Granbury. And really what we found through the community survey, The majority were residents of Granberry. And really what we found through the community survey, it wasn't statistically valid, but Aaron and his team pushed it out through various channels within the city. And and we really found support for recreational aquatics, for water fitness classes, for swim lessons. And we we found that the majority of folks, you know, some came to the existing swimming pool, others went to, you know, Stevenville or Cleburne or the Hood County YMCA for their aquatic offerings. And this is just an example of one of the questions and the responses that we got that shows the different features that we asked about. You know, would you prefer a zero depth entry, water slides, children's areas, lap lanes and other options like that? We also had an open-ended comment section on the survey where we found, you know, that the community respondents, you know, thought that it was important to continue to offer a municipal swimming pool here in Granberry. We had some responses notating the fact that the YMCA has the indoor competition pool and that's where the the Granberry Swim Team currently swims. And so that this facility could be more recreational focused. And we heard, you know, there's important, important features that should be included such as, you know, ADA accessibility, you know, newer updated bathhouse and and more shaded areas. We also had a community input meeting over at the conference center where we had our slideshow running on two different screens. We had some presentation boards as well, comment cards. And we found that in general, you know, there was support for more family amenities, support for that zero depth entry in children's pool. And then again, we heard the the reiteration that we should include lots of shade within the facility. And so once we looked at the existing condition of the pool, we came up with that, you know, one point two million dollars to bring it up to a newer version of itself. We also started to look at a couple of different options. And we placed these on the existing site of where the pool is mainly for size and scale. So you could see how big the options that we're showing are compared to the existing pool. And so option one, we looked at about a five thousand square foot leisure pool plus a separate eighteen hundred square foot children's pool. And so this has a zero depth entry there in the main pool with a family slide. It's got a couple of newer updated water slides. It's got a children's crossing activity, which I'll have a picture of here in a minute. And then it also has a designated children's pool. The children's pool that's at the current facility, you know, it doesn't really meet the needs of of many children outside of of maybe a nine-month-old that can just sit in the pool. And so the children's features that we we do now, you know, they have, they have play features, they have sprays, they have interactivity. And so, you know, we want to include both passive and active water in any facility that we do. But what we really find is that that children really like to have those active, active sprays and and interactive elements within aquatic facilities. This would also include a new support building, most likely similar size to the one that you all have now. And but some issues with the current site placement are, obviously, you know, parking could be an issue with a newer facility as well as the proximity to the baseball softball field just there to the north. And actually, on the day of our site visit, there was a couple of baseballs and softballs that were within the pool fence area. And so maybe, you know, providing providing some better separation from those if the the site were to be moved. We have looked at estimated cost for a facility like this right now. We're seeing construction costs fairly volatile within the aquatic industry as as it is with industries as a whole. But when we priced these, the first part of this year was about five point, about five and a half million in construction and just under seven and a half million for the overall project cost where we include project design fees. We include escalation as well as contingencies. And some example images of what that could look like. You know, you have the interactive children's, many there on the right. You have a zero depth entry with a family slide and shade on the left. The children's floatable crossing activity, a new and updated water slide tower. And the other thing that we considered is that that first option did not include lap lanes. And and this pool has always included lap lanes. And so we wanted to show an option that was somewhat similar, but it included the ability to expand into some lap lanes. And so that's the primary difference between option one and option two. We included those three lap lanes there in the top. And so that provides a designated, you know, fitness swim area, programming area. You could do shallow as well as deep water aerobics, swim lessons. And so we wanted to make sure that we we included some lap lanes in in at least one of the options. We also moved the children's play feature into the zero depth entry, but we still included a separate children's pool there to the bottom right of the facility. As we started to look at cost on this one, we came to right about seven million for construction and then about nine million for the overall project cost. One of the things that our firm has said for years is that really, you know, the the basic outdoor family aquatic center, you know, you can get an outdoor pool for, you know, five to six million dollars. And unfortunately here, within the past couple of years, that that cost has increased. And so now we're seeing that, you know, really, if if you're going to do an outdoor family aquatic center, that you're probably going to start at six million at a minimum and it's going to be in that range of, you know, six to nine upwards of ten million dollars. Depending on the number of pools, the number of features and things like that. The one thing that we did not want to do was to lower, was to go smaller than what you currently have, but also to make it more interactive and and more usable. You know, having more shallow water means you have a higher capacity. You know, once you start to to get into deep water, it it lowers your capacity. And so we wanted to make sure that we had a higher capacity and a lot of different elements within the pool so that people can can progress through the facility as they age. So we not only have areas for ages two to four, but then they can go, you know, to the main pool by the time that they're three to six years old. At that time, they they hit that forty-eight inch height requirement for the water slides and they can get on the water slides and then they can go to the deep water. And so we want, we wanted to have a facility that was multipurpose, multi-use, multi-generational and provides children the ability to really grow up within the facility. And then hopefully by the time they're they're sixteen, they come and work at the facility and have a good time. And so a couple of example images here, you know, there's a a lap pool on the right. There is the West Irving Aquatic Center that we designed with Stevens' firm a few years ago that has a zero depth entry with a play structure and water slides. And again, just some other example elements of, you know, water slides and children's play features as well as that updated designated children's pool and then that that crossing activity. One of the things we want to make sure to do is, again, I mentioned passive and active spaces and that crossing activity is just a great active space that provides challenge and agility and skill to get across those floatable pads without falling, falling into the water. And so it's great to to keep kids active and moving while they're at the pool. And then lastly, we looked at an option when the the results from the community survey came back. One of the highest requested features was to incorporate a lazy river into the facility. And so we took another look at the the different facility features. We wanted to keep the zero depth entry in the water slides because those obviously had high survey responses geared toward those as well. But we wanted to look at that lazy river. And so this one has a lazy river component. And so, you know, this one came in at about eight point four million for a total project cost. And again, size and scale, it it fits within the confines of the existing facility. But as you can see, it it's it's pretty tight. And so, but we at least wanted to show, you know, how that, how that would fit within the existing site. And so a couple of example images, there's, you know, another children's play area along with a lazy river as well as, you know, that could incorporate some water volleyball or, you know, another example of a water slide tower. And so there's the three options all next to each other, just so you can see how they fit on the site in comparison to one another. Obviously, option two was the largest as as well as the, had the highest capital cost for the three separate options. The other thing that we looked at was a couple of different site options, knowing that, you know, there is a a change within Granberry with with the growth rate, the number of people moving specifically to the north side, up three seventy-seven. And so we looked in, we pulled the demographics for the existing location within about a thirty-minute drive time, which is what we see is is about typical for outdoor aquatics in the summertime. And we found that the north side of town, it actually overdoubles the number of people, just population density within thirty minutes. And that's primarily because you're, you know, you're pulling from that southwest side of Fort Worth and and the Benbrook area as well as the, the income was was fairly stable, but the income within that region was definitely higher than the national average, which is about fifty, fifty-three thousand dollars per household right now. And so we also pulled the demographics for age distribution. And so the top right box there shows the age distribution, you know, anything that is below the the blue line or the, hold on, my, my eyesight is not as good as you. So yeah, so Granberry is the red line. The blue line is the national average. And so anywhere that the red line is below the blue line is where Granberry is below or above the national average. So a little bit of a of a higher aging population. But you can see the growth rate there, you know, for the thirty-mile radius as well as for the city itself is is fairly high. And so that's where we feel that, you know, you don't want to just go back with the same-sized facility, but that you want to plan for some future growth within the options that we showed. And then I mentioned the other area of facilities from Stevenville to Cleburne to the Hood County YMCA. You know, you have a a water park up in White Settlement. You have, Burleson has an aquatic center. And so you're really in a, in a nice little spot where there, there's not a whole lot of competition. You know, anybody is going to have to drive to these different facilities. And so we feel that, you know, based on those different sites, that there could be some differences within the number of people that attend if you go with the existing location or if you go with an, you know, a site on the north side of the city. And so that's where our operational analysis comes into play. So we have not only the construction costs, the project costs, but the capacity for each of those various options. We have projections on attendance, you know, in that, you know, thirty-five to forty thousand person range per summer. And a cost recovery, you know, in that sixty to seventy percent range, I would say that that's fairly common for outdoor aquatics within this area. One of the main things that we heard on the community survey and the open-ended comments was that we want the facility to remain affordable to residents of Granberry. And so, you know, making sure that it's priced appropriately so that, you know, maybe you have a resident versus non-resident rate, but making sure that it is affordable to residents, as they said, within the survey. And so, you know, I think the two key things to highlight again is that the site can can and will play an an issue with that, specifically if you're looking to draw people from that southwest Fort Worth area because that that additional, you know, ten minutes to get from the north side to the existing pool location can, you know, make a break, a thirty-minute drive time into a forty-minute drive time or or twenty-five into thirty-five. And then the other thing to mention is just the, as I mentioned earlier, the the capital costs are fluctuating. And so, you know, we've priced those out in, you know, early twenty twenty-two dollars, but we've also seen that those have increased a little bit since that time. So with that, that is a a quick snapshot into the work that our firms have done here in the past couple of months. So, you know, our goal is to provide you good, solid information so that you can make, you know, sound decisions about the future of the swimming pool. And so with that, would welcome any questions for myself or for Aaron at this time.
Ms. Reiner.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate that. My girls grew up doing competition swim right here in Granberry and for Granberry High School and the SEALs, so I am a swim mom.
Okay, great.
I do have some questions, so bear with me. I saw a lot of projections, but what I didn't see, based on your numbers, do you have a projected start date? I know this is just a presentation, but you have to base these numbers off of something. And as volatile as you say the market is right now, what's the projected start date if we were to base construction on these numbers?
So those would be in in today's dollars, but we have also included one year of escalation within those numbers. And so that would, that would get us until, you know, essentially one year from today with those, or one year from early. So early twenty twenty-three would have been the projected start date when those numbers were developed. The one thing that we do see with aquatic facility development is that you need about six, six to eight months for design and then another, you know, nine to nine to eleven months for construction. And so, you know, we would see that the earliest that a new facility could open in Granberry would be for that twenty twenty-four summer season if funding was acquired, a design team was hired and then design started pretty quickly.
Okay. And then this is, this might actually be a question for Tammy. I think she's in the audience. The the projections on cost recovery, does that include tourism dollars at all? If it were to be on the, the, you know, the Fort Worth side of town, we probably would bring in a different crowd. Does that include those projections? And I apologize if that was in there and I just missed it, but.
That is correct. Within our, within our numbers, we could refine it a little bit for, to be more site-specific. Right now, we've taken a more general, generalized approach, but yeah, we've definitely accounted that, yeah, you would have some folks driving from that thirty-minute radius outside of Granberry.
Okay, so we've got Granberry and outside of Granberry.
Correct.
This is probably a Chris question. What are we looking at funding this with? It's, all it takes is money, right?
All it takes is money and the last legislative session required that if you want to take on debt to build recreational facilities, it's got to go to the voters. So you would need to put this on the ballot in November. So that's a whole nother conversation with our financial advisor.
That was all I had. I think you answered the other question I had. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Wadley.
Mr. Thank you. If you go with one of these options or something like that where you're totally replacing the pool, is there really any significant difference in cost doing the current location versus another location?
So it, I think that's dependent upon the location. Obviously now, you know, at the, well, you would have demolition either way because you would have to demo the existing pool, you know, if you rebuild there, if you rebuild it somewhere else, you'd still have to, you know, demol it, demolish the existing facility and then repurpose that. The thing with a new site is that, you know, you would have, you know, site construction costs such as, you know, utilities, parking and all of that. And so I think it would probably take a little bit more of a detailed study, but we could, we could see it, it being fairly close on on both just because there's complexities involved with, you know, demolition of the existing facility, rebuild additional parking or looking at a new site where you're starting clean and, you know, have to bring utilities to the site, landscaping, parking and all of those issues that come up. Yes, and and land cost as well if the, you know, if you look at a parcel of land that the city does not currently own.
So these, the numbers that you have do not include land cost?
They do not include land acquisition at this time.
Land acquisition or scraping the ground or preparing it?
We have included a demolition allowance as well as site construction cost within our figures.
Yes, sir.
Did you include parking?
Yes, that's correct. Parking is included as well.
I'll let everybody ask questions and I got some closing ones.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Vale.
A great presentation. Love all the designs. I'd like to have one in my backyard.
Option two?
I was thinking about, you mentioned the Y. Obviously, we've got a really nice YMCA. We obviously got a city beach and a little splash zone area there that has been full really the last couple of weeks. When I looked at the page on all the renovations, are those our immediate needs? I mean, I guess my question is, is the pool functional and safely operational as it is today? And will that get us through the season?
Correct, yes.
Kind of thinking about what our immediate needs are.
Correct. And in terms of immediate life safety needs, we did not find any of those within our assessment. But it was more, you know, if the pool continues in operation, these areas are going to need to be addressed.
Understand. So the water slide replacement cost, is that what that is? It's in there, the hundred fifty thousand dollars?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And underwater lights, fifteen thousand, is that rewiring a lot of things? I mean, that just seemed high to me.
Yeah, that was replacing the the underwater lights. There was a couple that were not fun- uh, not functioning, as well as there was some rewiring that would need to be done as well.
Okay. That's important in a pool, obviously. So, okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Other questions? Mr. Kaufman?
I'd just like to add that currently, we're not running the lights because it's not safe. We've got them disconnected.
I have some, uh, questions on the numbers. The, uh, the site options, uh, probably just not understanding this, but, uh, site one, population, and then the income, six, seven, thirty-one. And then I'm looking at the next pages where you talk about, um, the expense budget and the projected revenues of, you know, two-hundred-ninety-eight and, uh, or the expense budget, two-ninety-eight, the revenue projection of two-oh-five, a ninety-three-thousand-dollar loss for option one. Option two's a ninety-nine thousand, option three is a hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand. I was just trying to compare that back to the, uh, the numbers, the sixty, the sixty-six and the sixty-eight, which I couldn't understand. We doubled the population, we doubled the, is that usage or is that just population?
That's just population.
Okay.
Yes. And so depending upon if the, the pool's on, uh, at the existing location or on the north side, you know, you just have, you, you shift that thirty-minute drive time from central Granberry to northern Granberry. And so you have a wider, uh, you cast a wider net of folks that are within thirty minutes of the pool to, to draw from. Uh, I, I still, you know, think that the majority of folks would, uh, of the attendance would come, you know, within probably a fifteen to twenty-minute, uh, drive time. But, you know, shifting it north, you're going to definitely pull some of those that are closer to thirty minutes away. And there's more, more people in that, in that direction.
And so you're assuming that, uh, option one, two, and three, even though you showed them that could be built over here, what is, are you basing this on the hundred-and-fifty-thousand population or the, yeah, the hundred-and-fifty-thousand population or the seventy-two-thousand population?
So we, we actually based it, uh, more so on the hundred-and-fifty than on the, the seventy. So we would probably see that if it was, we would see a little bit lower cost recovery rate and lower attendance if it was built to the existing site as opposed to the, uh, north side location.
Okay. And if these numbers, uh, hold, it would be about half the attendance, seventy-two-thousand versus a hundred-and-fifty-four.
Well, we, we actually don't see a direct correlation between density and, and attendance. Uh, you know, we're, we're still going to have, because, because a lot of those people are coming, you know, within a twenty, fifteen to twenty-minute drive time instead of a thirty-minute drive time. And so the farther out that we go, the, the less percentage of people we draw. So we still draw the majority of people from within fifteen to twenty minutes. Uh, but then we might only draw, you know, a half percent or X number of percentage from that thirty-minute, uh, drive time. So we still feel that, you know, this facility would, would probably have twenty-five to thirty thousand in attendance if it was at the existing site. But then moving it, uh, to the north side, you know, you can draw that extra ten thousand people.
Well, Mr. Kaufman has challenged me to find anybody anywhere that makes money on a pool. And, uh, I'm not going to take him up on that challenge, but I would like to... A municipal pool. But I would like to have, you know, would need some pretty good, we would need to be able to set clear expectations on what, what this would cost us, both from a construction standpoint and from an ongoing basis. So...
Correct.
Appreciate the effort. I, and, and appreciate the information as well. Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Stephen with Brinkley Sergeant Wigginton. And to kind of layer on top of that, I think it's important to know that this first blush of these options, these are all thirty-thousand-foot options. So much like George mentioned, um, on the, on the cost side, and, and to your question, um, sorry, I can't read that far. But, um, you ask, you know, what is, what is this projecting to? When are we starting? Well, the, the short answer is we don't know. And so it's hard for us to project cost because right now, the crystal ball is as fuzzy as it's ever been. The best we can do is say, this is what we think it is now. And likewise with, um, this performance, this sort of financial performance, the facility, we would recommend not only would the construction costs kind of get reevaluated and updated once, once there's more clarity and timeline, but once there's clarity in site location, it would make sense and scope to kind of update this number and get, to get more detail like what I think you're grasping for, and we can't quite answer it yet, is, those are the big directions that we feel like as a consultant, that we need input from, is, is time, is scope, is location. Then we can start fine-tuning both the budget and the performa numbers. Um, but anything you get from any contractor today is going to be qualified with a big fat asterisk on pricing. I mean, we all see it in the news every night, right, about inflation. Well, the reality is, construction costs don't follow the consumer price index. They're usually more substantial than the consumer price index. So let that sink in for a minute. You know, time is literally money, you know, right now. So I don't want to scare you guys, but I think it's important that you have our eyes wide open as to what our confidence level is in what we're presenting and what, what we can hear from you guys that will help us fine-tune that as, as best as possible going forward. Um, so for example, if you were going to target a November bond versus, say, May of twenty-three, or November twenty-three, or whatever, there's going to be a time value cost of money in each of those scenarios. Um, so it's scope, time, and money, like every project. It's just, just magnified these days. So I hope that helps you in, in your deliberations.
Well, we certainly did not invite you here to waste your time. We have, we have a great, this is an interest in our community. It's an interest at the, at this level as well. Yes, sir.
I've got a couple of questions. Um, in your existing facility audit, um, I just wanted to dot a few i's and cross a few t's. Is the pool ADA compliant currently?
Yeah, so is, with the ADA, uh, compliance, so if the pool is, uh, less than three hundred perimeter, uh, feet, then it would need one means of accessible entry. If it is greater than that, it would need, uh, two means. And so with the ADA compliant lift that is in place, uh, it is ADA compliant.
For, okay, so we have one lift, and that's all we need?
Uh, I believe so. I have to check back on the, the exact perimeter. I have that, um, in a report that I, I've written, so I can, I can double-check that just to make sure.
So another question I have to do with the audit is, does the existing pool equipment meet state standards, uh, as far as pumping capacities and things like that? The turnover rate of the pool, uh, those standards, are, did y'all look into that? And is that being met?
We did, yeah. So we looked at, uh, several different standards. We looked at, you know, sanitation and disinfection, which is more on the operational side. You know, do you have one part per million of chlorine within the pool when it is, uh, operating? But we also looked at the turnover, uh, rate, and this falls under the pre-nineteen-ninety-nine, uh, pool standard, which would be a turnover rate of eight hours, which, uh, it was compliant based on the, um, pump, size of the, the pipe, and the filtration.
Okay. Those are important to me because we're running a pool this year, and I've got a pool expert that's done an audit. I need to check these t's, cross the t's and dot the i's. So, um, so, uh, I had some questions. You answered them in your presentation. Thank you for that. Um, did you consider our rapid growth? I know you was looking at four percent growth. Um, you know, we've increased about fifty percent in the last five years. And I'm, I'm anticipating that to, uh, occur again. And I was wondering if this pool is going to be big enough for the growth in ten years. And just making sure y'all looked at that, so...
Yeah, we did account for that, and we had, uh, multiple talks with, with Aaron and his team about that. And so I think that, uh, as I was, uh, you know, just looking at the options and the cost, I think that's really why the, you know, a pool in that five-and-a-half to six-and-a-half million-dollar range for the total project cost, uh, we feel would not be sized appropriately because of that growth. And so we had to account for that. And so that's why the options got a, a little bit larger in scope, uh, due to the, the growth.
If, if, if we were to simply repair the existing pool with all the recommendations you made, approximately a million, million and a half dollars, uh, what do you think the expected life of the pool would be after those repairs are made?
Yeah. So as I mentioned, we usually see that lifespan of twenty-five to thirty years for an outdoor pool. You know, if you have that renovation in that, uh, eighteen to twenty-two-year range, you know, it typically can get another, uh, ten, you know, ten-plus years out of the renovation, uh, with the caveat that, you know, the ground and the, the pool structure is, is stable. And so, you know, you might want to have an additional assessment done, uh, by a structural engineer, just to ensure that the, the pool is structurally sound, that, you know, that when you take the plaster off and put new plaster on, that it's not just going to crack and delaminate because the pool structure is shifting. But typically, we find, you know, an additional ten years. And, and getting to forty years with an outdoor pool, uh, is not, uh, unheard of. And so we could definitely see that, you know, if you spend that money, that, you know, the pool could be functional for another, uh, another decade and a half.
Okay. Uh, besides being undersized for the amount of kids we're going to have.
Right, correct.
So our school system's expecting to go from, from seventy-seven-hundred students to ten thousand students by the end of this decade. So that's a lot of youth that need to be, uh, dealt with in our community. And so that's something we need to be looking at.
Yeah. And that's the one thing that the existing pool does, does not really accommodate well, just with this old style of pool. You know, you have, you have shallow water starting at, at three feet, and then, uh, deep water, you know, down to eleven or twelve feet. And so that, you know, child six and under really doesn't have a, a place at this facility.
And how big a track of land would you recommend for the largest option that you sized here?
So we're looking about four, four-and-a-half acres.
Okay.
In total land. So that includes parking efficiencies and all of that.
All right.
Chris, I think he can make it as big as he wants. As long as we have the land, right?
We've got land. It's not where he wants it, but we've got land. Now, um, we, we are looking at, you know, out in the area that you identified, there's some possibilities there. But, um, we just need to know how many acres we need, you know?
Sure.
Four to five, it sounds like.
Correct.
Last, last question. Um, when you were talking to the public, uh, do, do you think this project would be bondable? I mean, the people that you were interacting with, were they supportive of the city spending those, those dollars towards recreation activities?
Yeah, I think in general, uh, through the community survey and the public input session, that, you know, we heard from, uh, a lot of young families, and those are typically the ones that would be, you know, the users of this type of facility. And so, uh, I got the impression that there would be support for the facility, specifically within the open-ended comments, uh, of the survey.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Really appreciate y'all working with us and having those meetings. And, and, uh, I know Aaron and his staff have been very involved. And I know that you tried to get as much public involvement as you could. You know, I saw the survey was two hundred people. That's pretty good. Uh, Art's Commission had about the same results, so...
Okay, that's good.
We're, we're happy to get two hundred if we can get them. So thank y'all so much for all you do for us.
All right.
Mr. Mayor. I had one last question. It's about the budget. You're projecting that it would lose about a hundred thousand dollars a year. And Aaron, this is probably for you. What is our current pool cost?
Loss?
Cost or loss? I don't know what our income, just the whole same, same scenario.
Uh, about fifty thousand dollars total loss per year. We, uh, we made, uh, so revenue on admissions and concessions, um, in twenty-twenty-one was thirty-one thousand. Uh, expenses in operations, uh, not counting labor, was about thirty-nine thousand. Um, labor expense for concessions and guards, about forty-three thousand. Um, do the math, about, about fifty thousand dollar loss.
So what kind of attendance do we have? Your numbers are like much, much lower than what these projections are.
On average, eighty to nine, um, per day. Now, that, that's, everyone's excited when the pool opens. It tends to, uh, fade off a little bit longer in the summer.
Other questions, counsel? Okay. Thank you, Aaron. Thank you, guys. That was, uh, excellent presentation. You set a very high bar. We appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
Now going to, uh, move to item number five on the, seven-point-five on the agenda, where we will consider adopting resolution number twenty-two dash oh-eight, setting a public hearing under section three-one-one-point-oh-three of the Texas Code for a Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Extension, consisting of approximately two thousand seven-hundred-and-thirty-nine-point-two-three acres of land, generally located along the three-seventy-seven commercial corridor, and being wholly located within the corporate limits and extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Granberry, Texas, authorizing the issuance of notice by the City Secretary of the City of Granberry, Texas regarding the public hearing and directing the city of Granberry, Texas to prepare a final project and finance plan. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. And, uh, thank you, Mr. Trent Petty with Petty and Associates for attending tonight and enduring a, uh, long evening to get up to the dice. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Petty. He is our consultant that's been working with us to establish the TERS that we have, that we adopted last year, and then the, uh, possible expansion of the TERS in this, in this cycle. So Trent, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Good to see you all again. Uh, we're here tonight basically to look at the very first step in this process. Back in December, we created the TERS. We have not yet completed the project and finance plan. As we've continued to look at the area, the growth potential, uh, how that corridor appears to be redeveloping in some cases. Mr. Kaufman called us and said, hey, let's sit down and look at those boundaries one more time. And as we looked at it, it became clear that probably this is the best time to expand that boundary all the way out to the city limit line. And that's essentially what this, what this public hearing will do when we have it, uh, on July the fifth. We'll have the public hearing. We'll present all of this information. The statute requires us to receive input on that, and you would not be able to make a decision relative to this addition until that public hearing is complete. But you could do that on the fifth. At that point in time, we'd be able to have the project and finance plan ready for you to look at. In essence, we're just trying to take advantage of the growth trajectory of Granberry, especially that area that is out to the east as you grow closer to Fort Worth. Um, as we, as we progress through this, we learned that the high school would like to build a high school site out there, and there's quite a bit of undeveloped land. And frankly, to be able to take advantage of that, to bring that increment in as you look at economic development opportunities, probably makes a lot of sense. So this was, uh, Mayor, this was probably the best time to bring this back, to take a look at it before we got too much further down the road. And this will allow us to do one project and finance plan that includes that expanded boundary. I'm happy to answer any questions for you.
Very good. Counsel? Any further questions? Mr. Kaufman?
No questions. The staff recommends approval of the resolution. If y'all would like to move forward to consider a later date to extend, extend the boundaries of the TERS.
That'll be on the fifth. Yes, sir.
So that, uh, our audience is not, uh, thinking that we're being hasty here. The, uh, information that you provided, when you brought in the first TERS, was exceptionally complete, exceptionally well-understood, and, uh, very appreciated. So I think that, uh, speaks to the no questions tonight. Unless there are more? Okay. If there are no questions...
Let me, let me do something while I got him on the spot.
Ah.
I was free.
We're attempting to set a date, a future date, to have a, a joint meeting with the county commissioners and the school district. Would you be available to come to one of those meetings and explain the TERS?
Absolutely.
And their opportunity to participate?
Sure. And, and the school district cannot participate.
Right.
By state law, but the county certainly can.
But it'd be good for them to understand what we're doing.
Yeah. No, I'm happy to do that, Mr. Kaufman. And we, we do that frequently. This is a, frankly, this would be a good opportunity for the county to be able to participate and generate some new income from them, too. And the county happens to be one of our clients. So we're more than happy to do that and assist in that effort.
Thank you.
Great. Good one. Thank you. Okay. I'd like to hear a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-two dash oh-eight, setting a public hearing under section three-eleven-point-oh-oh-three of the Texas Code for a Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Extension, consisting of approximately two thousand seven-hundred-and-thirty-nine-point-two-three acres of land, generally located along the three-seventy-seven commercial corridor, and being wholly located within the corporate limits and extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Granberry, Texas, authorizing the issuance of notice by the City Secretary of the City of Granberry, Texas regarding the public hearing and directing the city of Granberry, Texas to prepare a final project and finance plan. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Reiner.
I make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-two oh eight as stated.
We have a motion?
I second that.
Mr. Woodley seconds the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Passes six and oh. We'll move to item number seven point six, which will be a public hearing, which I'll call after, uh, we get other information here. This is to consider adopting ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-four, approving a request of the city of Granbury to amend select sections of the subdivision ordinance. Amendments proposed are to section two point six B, approval authority for amending plat, to amend the twenty-one calendar day approval term for staff approval of amending plats. Mr. Kaufman?
Oh, I'll kind of pinch hit before I turn it over to Kara. This, this has been, uh, something that I've seen over and over that's had to come before the council. The state law provides provisions for, uh, administrative approval for lot consolidations. So if you have four or fewer lots, uh, you're able to, uh, the, a person is able to reduce the number of lots if they own them and consolidate them into one, one bigger lot or two bigger lots, depending on what they're doing. Reduce lot lines. And, uh, we have a twenty-one day time clock on that from the time they submit it until it has to be, uh, complete and have staff approve it. And so that's not working. And so because it doesn't fall within the twenty-one day calendar, we're having to put it on your agenda, on the consent agenda, and have to wait. And the participant waits to go through that process. So what we're proposing is, Kara, would you tell them what we're proposing?
It's to amend that twenty-one day calendar time period to allow an additional time that is ninety days.
So it gives the surveyor a little better chance to accommodate the needs for the client and still be able to get it administratively approved. That's all. Any questions?
Counsel? Uh, could they do it? Go ahead, Mr. Rodriguez.
Mayor, uh, so Chris, they were doing it in twenty-one days before, right?
Well, since I've been here, I haven't seen that.
What was the typical?
Well, they were having to bring it to the council because they didn't meet the twenty-one day clock. I didn't count past that. And Kara certainly has been here for a little while and has seen two of them that way or three?
At least two.
Yeah.
So what's the average time, Kara, for these to get approved?
Uh, it's been variable. Um, I'd say about ninety days is about the maximum that anyone's gone. Uh, so there's a little bit of speculation, yeah.
Okay. So if the. I didn't know that was too short of a time or too much time, uh, for, for y'all to have.
Sure. We feel that that's, that's reasonable. Um, it gives us a, a bit of a chance to, you know, collaborate with the applicant and, and see if there's something that has been misunderstood and get that sorted out and, and help them along their way.
But they're gonna, y'all gonna do it as fast as, I mean, y'all not gonna take the whole ninety days if no need be, right?
No, of course.
Okay, that answers my question. Other comments?
Yeah, the whole purpose is to get this work taken care of and out of our way so we can move on to other things. These folks are busy, so we gotta get it addressed. And it just lingers on when you have to put it on the agenda and then you have to post notice, and it's just crazy. So there's a process that the law allows, and if we'll extend this time, I think we can eliminate some of those consent agenda items for y'all in the future.
So do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-four, approving a request of the city of Granbury to amend select sections of the subdivision ordinance amendment? Thank you. This is a public hearing. I will now open the public hearing if anyone wants to speak on this. I will now close it. I am appreciative of you guys. So do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-four, approving a request of the city of Granbury to amend select sections of the subdivision ordinance? Amendments proposed are to section two point six dash, or dot B, approval authority for amending plat, to amend the twenty-one calendar day approval term for staff approval of amending plats. Mr. Corrigan?
So moved as stated. Recommend approval. Second.
And Mr. Rodriguez seconds. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. There being no nays, it passes six and oh. The next one is also a public hearing. Consider adopting ordinance number twenty-two dash two-five, approving a request of the city of Granbury to amend the thoroughfare plan contained within the twenty sixteen comprehensive plan. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. I'll turn this over to Kara. This is, uh, a need that we need to address, and she's put something together for you.
Sure. So the comprehensive plan is that policy document that guides our decision-making. And one of the components of the plan is a thoroughfare plan. It's the master thoroughfare plan. It shows in a map form, and there's a narrative also. Um, but it shows a map of, of the location of certain streets that will need to be provided within the community for transportation system. Um, here on this map, it shows that transportation system network. And, uh, that, that red line that's kind of in the middle of the map, let me see if I can get this pointer to, to work, right there. So that red line is Preakness. Uh, and Preakness is on the thoroughfare plan map, but it only starts with the orange line coming down through, uh, that subdivision. And with that subdivision, the extension was approved, and, um, that will be a commercial, uh, connection down to that right there where it changes into that residential. So that's what we're proposing, is to get that aligned with the needs of the community, um, and adding that segment to the thoroughfare plan. This just summarizes up, um, what I previously stated as part of the Saratoga development. The Preakness will extend to, um, the highway three seventy-seven. And, um, planning zoning on May ninth, uh, approves the item with a five-zero vote. Here, uh, should say comprehensive plan, thoroughfare plan amendment. Sorry about that. Uh, your voting options are to approve, uh, to approve with conditions, to deny or to continue the item if more information is needed.
Questions, counsel? What is the second red line?
Sardius.
So it's already, it's already there? Or, okay, it's just not, okay. Got it.
Sardius is a residential street.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
And, you know, it very well could be commercial there where it's adjacent to the highway. And we may need to look at that someday, but this is more immediate need.
Would you please throw up the, uh, alter, or the alternatives for approval, non-approval, deny, et cetera? So if I could hear a motion to approve, approve with conditions, denial, or to continue, adopting ordinance number twenty-two point five, yes. It's getting late. I'm gonna open this to a public hearing now. Does anyone like to speak in the public hearing? Then I'm gonna close the public hearing. Okay? Thank you, guys. Okay. Recommend approve, approval with conditions, denial, or continue the items. On adopting ordinance number twenty-two dash two-five, approving a request of the city of Granbury to amend the thoroughfare plan contained within the twenty sixteen comprehensive plan.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Woodley.
I make a motion that we adopt ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-five as stated.
Second.
I hear a second from Ms. Reiner. We have a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-five as stated. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. That be, that is six ayes and no nays, so this one will pass. So thank you all. We now have item number eight, citizen comments on matters not on the agenda. We have no one who has signed up? No one has signed up. So now we will root, move to executive session. I have a closing meeting statement here. I now declare that the Granbury City Council is convened into open session, that all members are present. The city council will go into closed session pursuant to provisions of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. Section five five one oh seven one, consultation with attorney pending or contemplated litigation. Section five five one point oh eight seven, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations, Gold Creek Homes. So we are now adjourned. Okay. I now declare that the Granbury City Council reconvenes into open session. Counsel, do we have any conversations? Ms. Reiner?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to take action to execute an agreement to provide a temporary certificate of occupancy for Gold Creek Homes under the parameters discussed in executive session.
I second the motion.
Second the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. It passes six and oh, as there are no nays. There being no other business, I announce this meeting adjourned.